Good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the City Council, City of Cape May, New Jersey. We are in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. It is Tuesday, September 20th, 2022. It is now two past six o'clock. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio-recorded and video-streamed live. Live-video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio-recording or live-video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Mulch?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Here.
Councilmember Yeager?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz?
Here.
City Manager Vahl?
Here.
Deputy City Clerk Dillon?
Here.
Also present, we have Deputy City Manager Louis Belasco, and we have Nancy Zerby of Arch Two, Inc. Also present. Any additions or deletions, council?
No, no additions.
All right, so we go into the update from the manager and a solicitor?
Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, mayor, council, special guest. As the summer comes to a close, we're starting to fold things up and put them away. The beach will be closing this Sunday, so we're putting away all the equipment to get ready for next season. I want to take this opportunity publicly to thank all of our public safety entity. Did a great job this summer between the police, the lifeguards, EMTs, the firefighters. And I want also to thank our volunteer fire police. Whenever there's an incident around town, those guys are out there. They don't get paid, and they're Johnny-on-the-spot helping out. And it relieves some of us in the police department with manpower there. We're preparing for hurricane season. Hopefully, we don't get one. We just had an emergency management meeting this week with all the essential personnel to make sure that we know everybody fits in when the whistle blows and where everyone's going to be going. We swore in two new Class II police officers this week, just yesterday. And as you're going to hear from the chief tonight, we are recruiting new full-time officers to hopefully totally get to 25 officers that'll complement and keep our squad safe and equal. We met with the school administration last week about the pool issue to make sure that our people in Cape May have the time slots to use that public pool over at the school. And that worked out fine. We have a good relationship with the school administration. Our team's moving forward, on with the arches on the promenade. There's things moving in the right direction. The mayor's been leading that, along with Councilwoman Baldwin, and a nice committee group. It's going to be an asset to this community. Public Works does a great job. They're continuing striping, excuse me, pedestrian lines across town. Tomorrow, they'll be back. They're going to be through, excuse me, the striping crew will continue Wednesday, tomorrow, through this Friday, and then in Frog Hollow Section, then the Village Green Area, and then when we're completed with all the striping, the shadows will then be placed throughout the community that's been requested. There'll be mulching at Lafayette Street Park this week, on Thursday, this playground area. We have a new pole barn for our equipment at Public Works. It's starting to be cleaned up and erected. That should be installed and completed soon. As we talked about at the last council meeting, our Public Works Department talented people there are going to be doing a restoration of all the current restrooms along Beach Drive, Beach Avenue. It's going to be Second Avenue, Gurnee, Trenton, and Wilmington. It's going to be a major savings to the taxpayers, having our people do that work inside and out, complete restoration of those restrooms. The AME Church, if you've seen it today, all the cedar shake is completed on that roof. It really looks great.
Beautiful.
Those guys scared me to death watching them. That is very steep, but they had all their safety gear on, and thank God they got through it, and nobody got hurt. So that's, and then the trusses, if you see in the firehouse, I know the mayor and the council have people that are here tonight. All the trusses are about up. Next thing you know, the plaid will be on, and hopefully, February, with the weather works with us, the mayor and council should have a groundbreaking of that new firehouse. We're going to have a meeting on the firehouse, an upgrade meeting on the progress this Thursday, and in the afternoon on the new police building, this Thursday afternoon. I sent council an update on all the county road projects, emailed today, so I don't want to get into it all, so I just hope you read it when you have time. The Atlantic City Electric Substation is moving along, contrary to have to block some of the road off to make sure we do a safe improvement there. Going to be meeting with the neighbors to meet with their concerns real soon. The Franklin Street Library, Lou is over there today. They're getting it started, and they should be starting all the work at the old school that's going to be with the county. The jitneys stopped this Sunday, so there won't be any more jitneys. And I just want to give you, from Casey at Civic Affairs, she sent over, said the fall children's events, we play Mondays and Fridays from 10:00 a.m., noon, at the Nature Center. Story Hour with Ms. Anetta, Wednesday from 10:30 a.m. at Harborview Park. Pelican Place Preschool is moving forward with scheduling, still requiring some testing. Upcoming events on the 29th and the 1st of October, Jazz Fest at the Convention Hall, October 1st Community Cleanup at the Harborview Park, and October 2nd, TEDx at the Convention Hall. And I ask everyone to register now for the Cape May Community Basketball Tournament. And if you're interested, please call David at 609-884-9561 at Civic Affairs. The Halloween Parade is October 23rd. That's it, mayor.
That's great. Thank you very much. City Solicitor, any updates?
I don't have anything tonight, mayor. Thank you.
No? Okay. And it looks like we are on to our presentation this evening. Nancy Zerby is here with us, who did just a wonderful job and has done some amazing research that we're thankful to have displayed and presented to us this evening. So Nancy, if you would, take it away. Thank you very much.
Can you give a little bit of background as to sort of what this project is, or funding? This project is 100% funded? Federal grant. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. This project is 100% federally funded project because the City of Cape May is a certified local government through the State and National Historic Preservation Program. In essence, what it is, when a property is put on the National, State National Register, it needs to have several items. It needs to have history, but it also has to have significance. Why does that history matter? It also has to have an integrity in terms of the property. In many ways, Cape May's historic district was put on the registers because of its wonderful architecture. The State National Register, Cape May went on the State National Register in 1970, and then in 1976, it became National Historic Landmark, which is the highest honor. And it's virtually, the district boundaries are virtually the city boundaries. These are just some of the quotes pulled out of the nomination, and it just gives a flavor of the emphasis on the architecture, the beauty, the grace. And so, again, it's very much that's why the district was nominated. And in a nutshell, what I was all about is looking at indifferent area significance. You only need one area of significance to put a property on the registers, and that was architecture. In this case, we're talking about a historic significance. We know, you all know better than I, that Cape May has had a very vibrant African-American community. I've told the mayor, told many of you, I have tremendous respect for what the local historians, CCA, have done to pull together history and photographs. It's been a lot of fun to look through that material, and I've worked in a lot of communities, and you should be very proud of the effort that you have done. So, what is the job all about? What was the task? Well, it's, as I said, first to figure out not just the history, but of course, there was some documenting more history, but also, why is it significant? And then the second part of that, since it is a preservation program, and you're focused on historic properties, what are the properties that represent that history? And these are basically the steps I did. One was starting with this tremendous wealth of historic material you already have, supplementing that, I say is possible, because you guys have done a darn good job, but there's additional that was found. And then the historic context, and that's looking at what has happened in the other communities, other African-American communities, and also, how have historians evaluated those communities and evaluating African-American history? And then, how does Cape May compare? And a lot of that was using the written documentation, but also the wealth of oral histories. It was real interesting. When I started combining them or looking at them together, a lot of what historians were saying was important trends in African-American communities I found here, and found a lot of them through what people were saying through their oral histories. So that was certainly a wealth. And then, the last is what survives. As you all know, a lot was lost, a lot in the late 60s and 70s with urban renewal, but my task was to see what's left, and maybe find a resource that wasn't thought of before. And a resource, by the way, can be eligible in several, just like an individual, just like a historic district can be eligible for multiple reasons, so could a property within the district. First and foremost, churches, religion. You're very fortunate to have three churches within one block that served African-American communities or congregations. African-American historians emphasize the extreme importance of religion and churches, the obvious, of course, for religious worship, but also just being so central to the African-American life. A lot of oral histories in Cape May talking about the role of the church, and we were there all day Sunday, and different events. Also, I put here Foundation for Civil Rights efforts. That might be something that you haven't thought of, but, you know, as I learned through some of the oral histories of other communities, you realize that there was a lot of leaning on, I shouldn't say leaning on, but depending on the pastors. They were leaders within the community, and there was examples of that here, examples in other communities. And the one I thought it might be fun to mention, as you might not know about, is there were, starting in 1830s, there were Negro convention movements, African-Americans getting together to talk about rights that they wanted for all African-Americans. First one in New Jersey was 1849. I did not see, I could find some records from that. I did not see mention in that representation of Cape May, but I did in the 1865 convention in Trenton. These conventions, if you're interested, it's, many of the minutes are online. They were amazingly organized, you know, in terms of representation, and, you know, the Robert's Rules of Orders, and coming up with resolutions. And this 1865 resolution here was passed with Cape May being represented, with the Equal Rights League of African-Americans talking, pushing for improvement of colored people in morals, education, industry, wealth, and religion. And there were also, these resolutions often went to legislators. So there was a real active community at even such an early date. Education. I mean, you know that there was segregation here until 1948, until the state required the desegregation. This was a report that I found at the State Library on the New Jersey Commission on the Urban Colored Population, talking about the status. Cape May at that point was one of 10 counties that was still segregated. Only 25% of African-American students in the state were in segregated schools. I thought it was interesting in terms of teachers. Teachers were primarily men of over 400, only nine of them were in desegregated schools. And then, this commission has this quote, talking about basically the disparity between the types of buildings, the materials that the African-Americans worked with. And that, again, with the teachers, talking in terms of the teachers, the African-American teachers had comparable training to white teachers, however, they were required to teach upward to 40% more students. There was a lot of emphasis on, and you read this in multiple ways, both in terms of histories of African-American community, and again, the oral histories here in Cape May, about the self-improvement. On the national level, in the late 19th century and early 20th century, as there was a lot more prejudice on African-Americans, some, basically, a form of pushback, if you will, and it happened here in Cape May, too, that there were two different schools of thought on how to approach it. One was the Booker T. Washington approach, and as I mentioned here, he spoke in Cape May, 1914. But one of his most famous speeches was this one in 1895, where he talked in terms of emphasizing self-improvement. That was his belief, that rather than fight and resist, it was more, his recommendation was to, was self-improvement, in the sense of getting an education, getting a better job, being able to buy a house. And in many ways, and there are multiple examples of this, again, through the oral histories done here in Cape May, but one of the people that came to really admire is William J. Moore. I know he's from West Cape May, but he did, and he taught there in their annex, but he also was a, he coached at the tennis club here in Cape May. But this is a quote that he said, I guess, I think it was in his biography, he talked in terms, his autobiography, that this was something he said to his students, that we, as African-Americans, can do anything that any other American can do. Part of the, and many of these self-improvement comes through, and there's lots of different subthemes that come through with that, but part of it was, again, it wasn't an end in and of itself, but it was a means. Self-improvement to, one of them was independence, and financial independence, homeownership, that was a big goal. And ultimately, and that's how it fits into civil rights, it was to be able to be part of the community and have a voice. We worked with the census data, and you see here, from 1900 to 1930, the increase in homeownership in the African-American community in Cape May. The census gives information whether or not the person owned or rented. This ad here, "Why Not Own a Home," was actually promoting homeownership in Whitesboro, which I thought was interesting of all places. There were several documents pertaining to Whitesboro that are at the Yale University Archives. And of course, a part of that independence and trying to get ahead financially was that there were a tremendous number of African-American-owned businesses here in Cape May. CCA has done a great job of documenting them, but it was an incredible number. You know, picking up on the theme of the getting ahead and self-improvement was for an end goal, there were multiple examples in national newspapers, as well as here in Cape May, of the emphasis on trying to improve, to be able to get involved and make a difference. And I thought this was a fun example. This is a national newspaper of the Christian, of the AME Church, and people often talked about these three, you know, more affluent resorts, Cape May, Newport, Saratoga, you often heard them together, but this was trying to encourage mainly young men to save their money, go out and buy, be able to buy land in Kansas, a better field in Kansas for aspiring young men of ability who wish to enter the arena of politics cannot be found. So it's that whole, you know, emphasis on trying to get ahead, but for the goal of being able to be part of, have a voice in the community. In addition, many to the importance of the church, as you see here from the statement by African-American historian Giles Wright, "By the late 19th, early 20th century, the African-American community was increasingly getting involved in secular activities, including many, like, local branches of national organizations." And this list I put together comes from newspaper articles of organizations that people were involved in, or that they, Cape May often hosted some of these meetings here in Cape May, regional gatherings, even some from, like, obituaries, or people being honored. You know, that when you put it all together, it was quite a range of activities. In Cape May, it's interesting that you have, you have many of the items I talked about are, have significance because they're representative of, but you also have something somewhat unusual because you have the issue of labor in a resort community. So you have these affluent visitors coming historically to Cape May, but as I'm sure many of you know, that many of the people that serviced them were African-American. In 1900, when you looked at the census and looked at jobs, most of the men, almost all the men, were listed as laborers. The women, some type of household work. But when you think about that labor, you know that that would be what we think of in terms of working in the hotels, and often the census would say, worked in, cooking in a hotel. It would involve the actual service industry, but also construction. There was a lot of construction in terms of new hotels. The, in the 1930s, the Work Progress Administration was active throughout the country, and in the 1930 census, you do see indication of some of the African-Americans were involved in local projects here in Cape May. So again, it's that construction, as well as the service And then you have the issue of travel and leisure, and you have it from a couple of ways at different times. One thing I don't want to overlook is the importance of, in the 19th, early 19th century, Cape May was attractive to affluent individuals, and that includes African-Americans as well as whites. And so, you did have affluent African-Americans who were coming here, Stephen Smith, perfect example, and who were involved in efforts for the Underground Railroad and abolition. And this information, and there's a wonderful job of this interpretation at the Harry Tubman Museum, but this initiative, or this effort and involvement of the African-Americans who were pushing, both in Philadelphia and here in Cape May, for freedom for African-Americans, is an important story for Cape May's history. And then, the other is in terms of, what I mean by separate housing, is that there were facilities that catered to or serviced wealthy white or visiting white members. And then, throughout the country, there were places that African-Americans could stay, and that's with the Green Book, and there were other books similar to that in, like, the 1930s and 1960s range, talking and listing, like, it would be by city, and it would list either hotels or guesthouses where people could stay. And that's an important part of the Cape May's history. This is, on the lower right is the little luncheonette at Grant Street, and that's part of the story, too, that there was nothing that formally restricted African-Americans to a certain beach, but it was just generally understood. And that comes across a lot in the oral histories also, that people say that, you know, the African-Americans talk in terms of, we weren't absolutely restricted to go anywhere else, we just knew that's where we went, and also, we went there because that's where we knew our friends would be. But there was definitely limitations. The other, I mentioned about the other, the school thought of, you know, trying to, how do you deal with an injustice? And yes, there's a trying to be the best you can, and improve, and own a home and get involved, but there's also resistance, and there certainly were examples of that here in Cape May. This is one thing that I think warrants even more research, because a lot of these articles are found in the local newspaper, and unfortunately, they are not yet digitized, so I think that there's some wonderful opportunity for exploring this more. But there definitely were some, was some resistance. But ultimately, this is, climate prices was one of the most well-respected African-American historians in New Jersey. And I found this quote, one that I felt I could relate to, having, after studying the African-American community here, is that, "In the main, the history of blacks in Southern New Jersey is a story of group survival and slow progress." And I think, you know, despite the fact that there was some resistance, I think these two phrases, group survival and slow progress, kind of sums it up well for me. It seems to fit, if you will. So what does all this mean? Well, it means that the document that I've put together, and it's still going back and forth with the state for final review, will basically put together this history in the synopsis of, there's, a nomination has two parts. It has a Section 8, that's the history and significance. So that will be taking, I've taken these themes and saying, okay, the African-American history in Cape May is important because here are the themes that it represents. And there will be, and then the Section 7 will be, okay, what are the properties that tie into and relate to those themes? Working with the state, the state has recommended extending the period of significance to 1948, to go with the desegregation of schools. I know you currently now have 1940 as your period of significance, but the state and national registers is different from the local designation, so that's something the city can work with in terms of, you know, it doesn't mean you automatically have to accept that as your, those extra eight years of period of significance for your local designation. And then, as I said, Section 7 will be looking at what buildings or areas are affiliated. And in many ways, it's the ones that you could probably readily think of, the Stephen Smith House, the Harry Tubman Museum, the churches, the parsonages, the Grand Street Beach, and some of the hotels, because when you think in terms of both the construction and the service in the hotels, you know, it makes you think in a slightly different way in terms of those hotels and their significance, and the debt that they owe, in many ways, to African-Americans. And that's something that I think somewhere I have down here, hopefully, that one of the goals is to leave Cape May with a list of some areas for additional research, things that would take even more digging than I could possibly do. And one of them is trying to tie some of the hotels to the African-Americans who work there. And then, there were, I mentioned some of the streets here, the major streets where there are still some houses that were occupied or owned by African-Americans. And, well, as I was saying, I hope to be able, at the end of this, to leave a few things behind. One is a renewed sense of pride in your African-American history, because I think there is a lot there to be proud of. And also, as I mentioned, leads for some new And also, as I mentioned, leads for some new research. There's always more than one can do, some additional digging. And as I mentioned, that this is, what I'm putting together is a document that the city can then, I think, process if you want to, the state and national registers, but it's separate from your, your local landmark designation, and you can decide to adapt it and bring it into that or not, but that's up to the city. And finally, I just wanted to thank everyone who's been so great in helping with research, the various historical organizations, and the great folks at CCA. I'm very grateful and I appreciate.
That's great. Thank you very much, Nancy. Nancy, if I can just, a couple of people I see here, again, the CCA, Emily Dempsey, I see you front and kind of center, but I know you contributed so much to the Copelands I see here as well, representing the Historic Preservation Commission and MAC. So many of those groups in the city of Cape May contributed to this research and much, much more. And I think this is a great start, Nancy, so I really, really appreciate it. And thank you all for your contributions to this important history that, to be blunt, has long been unrecognized as much as it should be. So we really appreciate it. Thank you. We're going to open it up to the public comment in just one second.
I was going to say, I'm not sure if council has comments, but there is a required public portion after this presentation, whenever you're ready for that.
Council, any comments before we open it up? Let's open it up for public comment, and if you want to come to the microphone, or, Chris, could you bring the microphone over?
I got it, we're good.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm Eugene Dempsey, Emily Dempsey's husband. I just want to thank the city of Cape May for what they're doing. It's great. And I'm hearing from people out of town about what's going on in Cape May, and it's wonderful to hear it. We always thought we had a hidden treasure here, not, it's not hiding no more. I mean, people are, you know, I'm coming, every day you hear people, I didn't know about that, you know, but it's great. And I want to thank the city of Cape May.
Thank you, Mr. Dempsey. Thank you very much.
I'm Emily Dempsey, West Cape May, Eugene Dempsey's wife.
Sixty-five years.
And I also would like to thank the city of Cape May, Mayor Mullik and his family for helping to lift what we've been struggling with for years, the African-American history, a community that was in decline. We knew the history was there, but finding it was very difficult. And right now, we have all these people helping to lift. We're finding out so much, and I'm just so grateful to see these institutions.
Pulling together.
Lifted, rebuilt. It's great. And as I look around, the appearance of my friends and neighbors here shows their interest, that they are interested, they want to have input, they want it all to be all-inclusive because we were born and raised here, and we would like to play a part in this beautiful redevelopment that's taking place. So thank you again, and thank all the people in the community for showing out somehow. There was a leak that this was going to happen, and we all showed up. And I'm so proud to see everybody out to show this type solidarity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy, I just have a quick question. Historically, is there a lot of other areas in the country that actually have African-American, they probably have buildings, but not so much as a, like a longer area, like a larger area, like we were looking to do right here?
I'm sorry, have a larger area?
Like, I said, no, Philadelphia, yes. Like, Philadelphia has, I know, some houses and everything else, but we're looking to do more of a designation for a certain area. Is there any other places in the country that actually have areas that are designated?
There are other areas, there's even Lonside is a community that was designated for, it's been primarily African-American. So there are, and then there's areas of other cities that have been designated.
Do we have any other public comment this evening on this topic? I'd just like to add, and on top of this, but relevant obviously, is if you go outside this evening, look at the AME Church, we just got the Cedar Shake roof done. We didn't plan it that way to be done today, but it was done, finished today, and it looks beautiful. And I think when you see the stained glass windows that have all been repaired professionally and artisan, really a beautiful job, and I think Warren Copeland, especially for the recommendation on the person who did that Lamb Studios, did just such a beautiful, beautiful job. So when they get put back in the church, and the painting is refinished and everything, I think you're really going to see the vision for what that building will become, and it's really, really going to be beautiful, so. And then the library, of course, will be starting, actually breaking ground within the next two weeks. So I mean, really two key properties here that we've been wanting to do for a very long time, finally getting started, so it's great news. Emily?
Could I ask you one question?
Go ahead.
Are there funds available for the Bell Tower?
Yes. Yeah, are there funds available for the Bell Tower? Yes.
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 Okay.
So that's the next, that's the next step after this initial phase right now, the stabilization, weatherization, roof, windows, all that.
Looks great.
Yeah.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to just add something, Mayor.
Sure, sure.
I'd like to just, you know, in recognition of the new library, we're going to have our school repurposed into a library next door. Many people may or may not know that the back portion of the library where the gymnasium was, or is, was, was only used by the white kids and not the African-Americans who used the front part of the school. So the architect of this new library is, you know, metaphorically and physically going to break a hole through that barrier and have it exposed with glass so that, you know, people know that this is a change for the future, you know? And I'd like to just share that, I didn't know that Booker T. Washington spoke in Cape May in 1914. That's, that's pretty cool. And some of us know that Martin Luther King also spoke at our own convention hall at one time. And I just think it's great that the city is promoting our African-American heroes of the past and those who are still living with us today.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Any other questions or comments, council? Okay, well, we can move on to something a little more boring. I see our, I see our, I see our chief financial officer here, Neil Young, thank you for joining us, and he's going to give us a little financial report.
Let the folks leave, and I'll be brief, because I know the chief really wants to share that video he's got. All right, I'll just quick go through, this is a finance report detailing January through August. Kind of, we kind of wanted to meet up to go over how the summer season went. You'll see, once I go through this, it's been great on the revenue side. We couldn't ask for a better, better season. There's only one or two items that have downticks. Everything else has been fantastic. So, so page two is just the cash balances, kind of shows the god-awful interest rates that we're getting on our accounts. They have been improved by Sturdy Savings Bank, starting September the first. And I will be, I have, I have opened an account with the New Jersey Cash Management Fund on behalf of the city, and we will be sweeping certain funds into that higher account, just to, just, it's two point, right now it's at two point something, so it's really good. Yeah, especially for governmental funds, it's really good. We have, we're limited on how we can invest, so that is probably one of the best we're going to get right now. Other options are buying other people's notes, other municipalities' notes, but you're kind of limited to the amount and to what's for sale at the time, at that point in time. So Cash Management Fund, sweeping money into there is going to be the best way at this point, and we're moving in that direction.
Neil, is that still with, is that still with Sturdy Savings?
No, it's through the state of New Jersey, it's with one of their banks, I think it's called State Street Bank. I am in discussions with both Crest Savings and Ocean First as well, so we're just going to try to get the best. Sturdy's going to have the bulk of the funds, but we're going to sweep money in when possible and get, get higher rates.
Because I thought we had passed an order into a resolution that every September...
Nancy, thank you very mu, I apologize. Nancy, thank you very much. Thank you.
That every September, we would look at the bank and see if we're going to stay with that bank or go to a different one, depending on the interest rate.
Right, and that's what kind of has happened at this point. Sturdy Savings Bank did meet with the managers and came up with a better rate on Sturdy. And then I, on my own, have gone to State Street Bank through the New Jersey Cash Management Fund and Crest Savings Bank and Ocean First, and we're just going to see which one is going to offer the best interest rates and then use that as a mechanism to invest funds.
That's great.
That will be, I guess I just want to make it clear that if they come in at better rates, then we will be moving that money over to the other bank.
That ultimately would be something up to city council, if they wanted to go out to an RFP for depository services. I'd suggest necessarily, at this point, I'd suggest against that, only because Sturdy is two steps away, and it offers free parking meter count. At this point, they have the machines to count the revenue, but ultimately, city council can decide to move that direction.
To me, it would depend on interest rates, because...
That, that as well, but the sweeping of money is going to help with what you're...
And that's a, and that's a big change, just to be clearly, you know, one, they did just bump up our rate, but two, using a sweep account, 2% is a big, big change.
Yeah, and that's current, and it'll fluctuate through the, you know, as interest rates start changing on us, it'll fluctuate as well. But we're going to do, we're going to find the best rates that we can and invest where we can, but make, keep Sturdy as our main depository.
Right, because we have to be careful they're not putting all our money in one bank and make sure that it's secured.
Exactly, I took that from what you've stated in the past, and that's why I've reached out to the other institutions that are local as well, so that our funds are mixed up and diverse in the other, other banking institutions. All right. Financial highlights, occupancy tax. I know Dennis is, one of his favorites. MTRAC and I and city council had suggested to raise the rate to 3%. In doing so, you can see we're currently up over $500,000 through August. We're projecting we'll be up about 1.4, 1.5 million by the end of the year. So huge increase based on occupancy tax, which will help us for the future.
Are we going to have a breakdown between hotels and the rentals?
Unfortunately, we've been trying to get that from the, from the state, and they have not offered any more than what they currently provide us. So right now, they provide us a list of those folks that, those entities that are contributing. However, they don't break down how much each entity is paying, they just give us a lump sum and then the...
Because, yeah, we looked into that.
Correct.
Yeah, we were trying to find what, what each entity was providing, so we can kind of get an idea of where that revenue is.
It would be very helpful if we can get that information. So if anybody has a state contact at the treasury or taxation that's willing to help, the lady that I spoke with only provided, once again, the same information that they already give us.
Yeah, and I think Lou was looking into it as well.
Yeah, so at this point, we're kind of stuck. Parking meters, currently down about $96,000, and I think the reasoning in the beginning was maybe high fuel prices, we're stopping the day-trippers from coming. However, and we'll get to it a little bit later, I think we're not as bad as it looks through August, because many more people are using Park Mobile, which is, we get a month later. So those might have been captured in August, but we don't get that checked till September. So I think we're really only off by like 15,000 bucks, so not bad. Mercantile.
Because Park Mobile, the people parking are the ones that pay all the fees. We don't pay a fee to park.
Correct. Originally, it was set up differently, but now it is set up that way, where all of the fees are borne by the user.
All right.
Yep. Another one from MTRAC, and this might be a Dennis Crowley movement, I don't know. The mercantile license structure was changed as well, and kudos to city council and then city clerk's office. That's up $61,000 as well. So everybody's efforts there have been helping the city's revenues and will help with future expenses. So good job to all. Construction revenues, another one, up about 100 grand. This just shows continued investment into the community from the property owners and shows growth. So the city's still thriving. I know Lou had mentioned through the years that we've been increasing about 30 million a year in assessed value, so, so huge growth, and let's keep it going. So great job to Lou Vito and his staff for keeping up with the additional work that's posed on them during these times. Beach tags up another 150 grand over the prior year. So even if we have a slow December, we're still going to be, we're still going to be ahead for the year. So all of these major revenue sources have been doing fine. Tourism revenues, this one's huge. We're past pre-COVID bad revenue years, up $427,000. So kudos to Casey and her staff for getting this back to normal. It was a tough go for a few years there financially, but, but we're back at it and we're thriving once again. Water sewer revenues, we're kind of stagnant, we're up $62,000. There's one area that I kind of looked at today that Cape May Point's consumptions are way down for, for the year. And I talked with Rob, and we think it could be, once we increased our rates, they increased their rates, and they feel that maybe people stopped using as much water and stopped irrigating their lawns, you know? So it's a potential that rate increases don't always work, dependent on, on the location. And that may be the instance here, but we'll, we'll continue to look at it and talk with Cape May Point to see how their billings are looking as compared to what we're sending them. And if it's similar, there must be, there must be, you know, the, the rate increase didn't help them, it hurt them, and now it's not necessarily helping us either.
But it's conserving water, which is good.
Which is good, which is environmental, a good thing for, for the environment as well, yeah. Okay, so that, that's kind of the highlights. I don't want to bore you with numbers through this whole thing. I have highlighted, the next page is current fund revenues. I've highlighted areas that were down. Courts, minor, Ms. Linda will take care of that. Parking meters, we've discussed. Interest on investments, we've discussed. And EMS, EMS is currently down about 20 grand. It doesn't mean that it's going to be down for the year. If runs are up, it usually means that just we're slowly collecting the funds, so we'll continue to look at that. Next page is just the breakdown on the occupancy tax, you guys have...
Yeah, EMS runs.
Yes.
Those are usually built like a month behind.
Yeah, and it could take another month or two for someone to pay, so we could be two to three months behind by the time, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Occupancy tax, you've seen these reports before, we're at 2.1 million. This is updated with the September payment. So as of September, we're darn near what we collected in full last year, and we expect an $800,000 projection for August, which we'll receive in October, and then probably another five, six, 700,000 from the last two months. So we're talking another million five, so we might be up a million four, million five at the end of the year. So hu, huge, huge help for the city.
Great.
Yeah, that, that's a huge, huge thing for the city, if I may make a comment on that, because that's going to keep taxes at a, at a stable rate or not, not increasing.
Yeah, it definitely, definitely helps the city in whatever fashion the city ends up using it for.
Right.
It's hard to find that type of revenue source, and you guys had done it, and we've been talking about it for a few years, so it's, it's good to see it done.
And I'm glad that we did that, because that's something that should have been done a few years ago, instead of the infrastructure being paid for by taxpayers. So that was a really nice, nice thing to see.
Oh, yeah, huge bump, huge bump for the city and does take that relief off of, off the taxpayers. Parking meters, that's just a breakdown, this comes, sorry for how colorful it is, but the ladies in the tax office certainly love to put together... love to put together bright spreadsheets. So thank them for this, and it just gives-
Is ink up in this?
Yeah. Yeah. Josh's ink is running low after this one. That's just a detail if you ever wanted to look up by, we, we kind of keep it by zone, and each zone is an area in town. So when we really need to dive deep into something, we can, we keep it on that level of detail, but we won't, you know, get into that right this evening. Now, current fund spending side, we, in full, which is the next two pages, we're up about 600 grand, which is only 3%, so it's not like it's an overabundance of money. There are certain areas that we need to keep our eye on for the last few months of the year that are getting close to their budgetary capacity. There are traffic maintenance in streets and roads, 70 and 80%. The reason that they're so high is we have been doing a lot in town in those two areas. So good, good job at getting those things done, but let's keep an eye on it for, till the end of the season so that we don't go too far over here. If you guys have any questions on the spending side, just get in touch with me. I break it down by budgetary code, but I won't bore the rest of the, the people in attendance with, with the details. Water sewer side, the next page is, is the revenue. Like I said, the one area that we're, we're looking into a little deeper is Cape May Point's water consumptions. Everything else is pretty on par or above the prior year. Right now, we're up, like I said, 62 grand and should have no problem hitting our anticipated revenues by year end. The spendings, the spending side of the budget is the next page. Once again, we're doing great. We're actually down $500,000 in spending from the prior year. Much of that is the Cape May County MUA bill has gone down. So great job by Rob in, in keeping expenses down. And let's keep our eye on the well supplies line. We did have issues there as well during the year, which have been corrected, and, but let's, let's keep our eye on that account as we move forward.
Is sewer treatment down because, that's water consumption?
Sewer treatment's down because of the bill from the MUA, based on prior year's usage, was about a million, half a million dollars less than, than the prior year. So that's why it's down. We use, we had less flows than they anticipated in the prior year, so you get a large credit in the next year.
Okay.
So hopefully, we'll continue that track, but history has shown that we'll probably get a large payable in 2023. Beach utility revenue, we talked about. I've only highlighted the interest on investments because it's not up to par, but it will get there by the end of the year. Everything else looks good on the revenue side. Another one of the tax office's, spreadsheets are next and very colorful. That breaks it down per commercial, by area making the sale. So they have it by beach and by tax office. I think the importance here is to just show how much is really sold on the beachfront versus how much is really sold in the tax office. So $2 million is sold at the beachfront level. The bottom half is 2022 for you guys. And 780,000 thus far has been sold by the tax office, which, you know, just under a third by the, by the end of the year. So good job to everybody involved. We're doing great on beach tag sales. Next to spending side, same thing. Everything looks good. We are currently up $87,000 in spending, which isn't the end of the world in the beach utility. I did want to highlight the one item that has increased, which is insurance, and this is another one that actually came from MTRAC where we stated we would push some of the expenses to the utilities and make sure they pay their fair share, and that's the reason why I've highlighted that, because it shows that we have, we are moving that, that direction. Tourism utilities next. Revenue side, we are up, like I stated, $427,000, mainly due to events and lease and rents of the building. And you'll see room occupancy, occupancy tax is not filled in at this point, but once we get towards the end and we know the proper amount that we'd like to put into the tourism utility, we will do so. It might be an amount that's very similar to the budgeted amount or anticipated amount of 515,000. It won't need any more than that, and in my opinion, it probably doesn't need that much this year, but we'll probably put that amount so there's not a deficit in that one line item.
Neil, in order to figure out that tourism budget, are we going to get a report on the concerts and, I guess, the profit loss or whatever it is that would be with those concerts? Because we did a different structure this year.
Okay, yeah.
It would be interesting to see how it panned out versus last year.
Yeah, we could definitely do that. And, and you can see, but just by the, that last line item, tourism fees and events, 381,000 was received through, that includes recreation and craft shows and such as well. But 381,000 this year is compared to 115,000 last year. So huge increase, which shows we're back. That's kind of where we were 2019 era. So, you know, we're back to, to post-COVID and hopefully that stays.
But we did different things with the concert.
Yeah, we can definitely get that.
You know, is that beneficial for us to do it again this, next year? You know, how we put that in the budget?
Okay, yeah, we'll get that for you. On the expense side, we are up at 218,000 expenses, but as your revenue grows, you're going to have greater expenses in that industry. So given that we're having more events, there's a cost to do so, but we're, you know, the, we went up 427,000, and we only increased expenses 218,000, so we're still way to the good, 200 grand. And that, that type of difference will go right to fund balance.
Yeah, because I see here for the tourism.
Yep, go ahead.
It's actually down from last year.
Which, which sec, which page are you on?
Tourism utility budget.
Okay. The buildings and grounds is down.
The tourism and marketing.
The tourism and marketing is actually up in expense, $98,000. So we have used more funds. If you compare the middle column of 2022-
Looking at the budget.
Yeah, so the budget did go down because we split it, we moved money to recreation to, to acknowledge the cost of the recreation salary and wage. Before, we had it all grouped in tourism and marketing. We just split it so that, so that the department could better see where the costs are flowing. Okay?
Okay.
And the last page, kind of the financial picture as we look to the 2023 budget process. As I've mentioned, the revenues were strong in 2022, which will assist our 2023 budget. We'll continue to review the water and sewer rates to all users, including the bulk users, to ensure the financial stability of the water sewer utility. We'll continue to, you know, provide tourism-driven events and recreation programs to ensure the financial stability of that utility. And as interest rates are on the rise, as I mentioned, we'll start to sweep funds into higher interest-bearing accounts. On the expenditure side, here's kind of what we've got to, what we'll be dealing with in 2023. The health benefits, I know you guys had passed a resolution to try to convince the state Health Benefit Commission to not approve the 20% increase to the cost of the health benefits plan, but they did not listen, and they approved it. So, so the state health benefit plan will have a 20-plus percent increase in 2023. So those rates are not out yet, so I can't tell the full impact to the city, but as soon as they are, we'll get that out to you so you kind of have an idea what's coming. Obviously, contractual obligations are always aired from the collective bargaining agreements. We'll have to deal with those. In the current fund, the debt service will be going up 200,000 in 2023, so you got to think of that as, as we start to plan here. And as interest rates are increasing, I know we have a lot of projects going on, our short-term borrowing costs will also increase, so to pay for these projects, I borrow funds. So we have to keep in mind, you know, that interest rates right now, it's, it's only a one-year term, so you're not stuck for life when we do this, but based on the market conditions, as I borrow, the, the rates aren't great, so that'll be a budget hit when, when they become due. There's another increase to minimum wage, which really isn't an issue for the city. It goes from 13 to 14, starting 1-1. Most of our folks are above that, so we shouldn't have too much impact there. And then the additional staffing requests that may come from a department, that's next on the list tonight. Great lead-in, right, chief? That's it for me. Any questions? You guys can, you know, get in touch with me anytime. If you have questions tonight, I'm happy to answer them, but my office isn't too far away.
Neil, great job. Thank you.
You got it.
I mean, we had a great season, so it makes that a little easier, but you've done a great job, so I really appreciate it.
Yep, no problem, and thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, I think we have what a lot of us have been waiting for, is a feature presentation.
I do appreciate it, Neil. Thank you. Kelly and Alex, if you would come up for me, please? I just wanted to recognize some staff and what we have done here in the last year or two since I became chief. After Floyd and COVID, we saw a decline in, in recruiting purposes, trying to get officers in, qualified officers into the department. We saw a decline and a sharp decline that we wanted to try to thwart and, and make better for the, for the city and for the department. We're looking for very qualified people to work here. We, we try to pick the best. So Detective Shustak, who's standing in my rear here, she doesn't want to be up here, but she's here, came up with some thoughts here, came to me very quickly when she made detective and said, I'd like to do more. I want to, I want to be part of the, of the fix, not the problem. And she indicated that when she went to school, she's a graduate of Wilmington University, and she said, you know, she attended job fairs and career days, and she said, you know, asked if I would, you know, support that. She offered to do it for free. I said, that's not how we do things here, but, so she did that. She enlisted the assistance of Patrolman Przynski, who's also a graduate of ACCC, to go and visit colleges through New Jersey and in Delaware, our, our kind of tri-state area. A lot of Pennsylvania schools, but we're, we're getting there. So they have started the program. We have, which I'm calling here, the Cape May, Cape May Police Department Recruiting Program. They are attending, or they just got back from Seton Hall. They will be attending Stockton, ACCC, Rowan, Rutgers, Montclair, Keene, Delaware State University, and William Patterson. So between now and next spring, and then the continuing next fall, following fall, they're going to be doing that. We, we feel that that will be a benefit to the department, the city, to gather those type of people coming in. So another idea that Kelly had was, hey, let's make a video. And I'm like, you know, I got a face for radio, and I like to talk, so I have my five minutes of fame here. So I, I went with that portion of it. I said, well, how much is this video going to cost? She came with that answer. She said, I have a gentleman that's willing to donate some of his time if we can find some money to support that. So we found additional initiatives as our body worn vest that you're seeing on Officer Przynski. This year's drone program, they supplied $10,000 to the drone program, which will help with a project that I'll roll out at a later meeting on the drone program that will help look and locate missing persons, elderly, kids, beach issues as far as mitigation there. So that's one of the part programs. So we got that fee reduced. Mr. Jeff Casella produced a video. Actually, Kelly wrote the video and produced the video. He just took the video and, and put it all together. So we wanted to present that to council today. We have put it on Facebook and Instagram. The big part of the, the first Seton Hall, right, where we just went through, Seton Hall, we had a, you know, 30 inch, 32-inch TV there. I think it played on a loop for these guys, and I think we got some benefit from that, Alex.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, it played, it was, you know, people could see where they were going to work, you know? Instead of just seeing a piece of paper saying, hey, you want to work in Cape May? We showed you, we showed them this video. So without further ado, I, first, I want to also just, again, I can't do this alone. These two officers, along with some other officers involved, helped make this project come to life. You'll see here some, some vehicle changes that we made to one of the vehicles, Patrolman Comely and, and Patrolman Cole, or Sergeant Cole, pardon me, put that together for us to change the vehicle dynamic and look. Deputy Mayor Sheehan had asked for a better, broader side of the vehicle to be shown. Police is very broad, and you know what you're looking at when you see a vehicle come down the road. So without further ado, the video with Aaron, you can put that for us.
Bear with me just one moment, please. The internet is testing me.
And as you see, once the video starts, it's, I think, a great depiction of our island, Cape May City, Cape May Point, and West Cape May.
Yeah.
Yeah, here we go.
Courage, compassion, honor, and integrity. If these core values are part of who you are, the Cape May Police Department is the perfect place for you to take your career to the next level. Our officers are part of a talented and dedicated team that works tirelessly to protect and serve all members of our community. With several special units and divisions, you can find your place here at the CNPD. Plus, Cape May Island provides a dynamic environment and a chance to make a real difference for our citizens and our vibrant, welcoming community. Our officers go through an intense paid training process with over 1,000 hours of training, including procedural justice training, implicit bias training, diversity training, and enormous amount of variety of courses. The Cape May County Police Academy will prepare you to police in today's world. The Cape May Police Department is a leader in the ever-changing and rapidly changing field of law enforcement. The CNPD is part of the nation's oldest seaside resort, facing new law enforcement initiatives and efforts to stay connected with our residents and visitors. We strive to conform and remain in line with state and federal guidelines as we stay agile to meet and exceed the needs of all members of our community, residents and our tens of thousands of year-round visitors. I'm Police Chief Deacon Fashaw. I grew up here, and I'm dedicated to serving the citizens of Cape May, West Cape May and Cape May Point Barrows. I'm extremely proud of our officers, the residents they serve, and the community that supports us. Help us continue to make the Cape May Police Department a place that's safe for all people. Make a difference. Join the Cape May Police Department and find a new calling, a new career, and a new family. Visit www.capemaypolice.org and click on the employment tab for further info.
Do not buy solar panels.
We're very proud of that video. I'm very proud of it. Part of the team that made that video. Being a leader is a leader, but having a strong team behind you is, is, is much more important to me. Again, I say it all the time, I, I can't do this job without them. So we are looking for the best. We are looking for people to come and, and join this police department. We're staying in line, like I said in there, with all the procedural justice things that we need to do. We're competing, you know? We're in a competitive market with all the other shore communities. This year, I had to wage the dollar amount of, of what we paid officers per hour just to stay in line with the Crest and Ocean City and, you know, and, you know, somebody goes up a dollar, or these, these young men and women are looking, they're not stupid, they're looking for the best dollar. And, you know, this video shows Cape May has a very bright place to work, you know? I didn't want to show, you know, a lot of the negatives, but there's, you know, there's not really much negatives. I mean, I enjoy coming to work every day in this town, in, on this island, so I've had a very good career here, and I think someone wanting to work here will do so. We have several programs that go in line with this. We're meeting with several local organizations, the Village Green community. We're going to meet with this Friday and just kind of sit down with that community and, and talk to them about the NICSOL program and some of the older programs that we've had in line that we can help. So we're doing our part to help. We have a lot of, you know, complaints of different things on the mall and different things we can pick up. Received a couple complaints over the week of dogs on the mall. We are doing our part to, to, to get more officers into the city. And, you know, I, I work with, you know, six, six officers this summer walking, so we were very light. You know, 12 to 15 is where we shoot for. Lieutenant Walker's back there shaking his head because he's a part of, he's in charge of that program, and, you know, it's, you know, it's very hard to get the employees. We were down this summer, so my pledge is to get us back up to where we were, you know, with the supportive council and the city manager's office to do so. So please bear with me as we just continue to build this department to where it used to be, and I think it'll be better for it. Any questions?
So great job, chief, and I think it's a great recruitment video. You're obviously making all the efforts to do it, so.
Well, we're all about first here. First in Cape May County to do a lot of things, so.
Right.
A lot of the, I was played at the Chiefs Association, and a couple chiefs were like, really?
Don't let them steal our ideas too quick.
I'll take that. So we're first to have electric vehicles come into the city here. I'll take that. So we're first to have electric vehicles come into the city here. There are a lot of firsts in this community to have that. So I'm crossing my fingers that the electric vehicles work. It's your baby, so we're going to do it. All right? So it's all our part to do that. But thank you very much for your job.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, next on is a potential discussion regarding.
Yes.
City clerk.
We have a draft ordinance amending Chapter 166 of the City of Cape May Code regarding boats to require registration. I do believe council invited our co-volunteer harbor masters to participate in this discussion, unless council would like to talk first.
Council, if that's okay, if I could introduce our harbor masters, Jack Lord and Tom Carroll, who, when they both volunteered, I thought this couldn't be any better, two great people for the city of Cape May who care about the harbor, care about our community. And I know, Jack, you were former Coast Guard, Tom, rather, and Jack, you've been in the harbor, I think, your entire life. So I really appreciate your willingness to volunteer. And basically, tonight, I think, is the first example of the two of you putting your minds together on some ideas that might help the city of Cape May. And if you would like to, you could join us at the microphone right now and introduce yourselves.
Gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind just turning it on.
Thank you for being patient with our presentation, so appreciate it.
Okay. Well, good evening. Jack Lord, I'm at 1321 Delaware Avenue, and very happy to be here. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and city council for providing me and Tom with the opportunity to serve our community in the city of Cape May as your co-harbor masters. As Zach said, or mayor said, you know, we're very passionate about this and look forward to working together to keep our harbor safe and clean. To kick off this conversation, I did put a couple slides together here that I'd like to share. So this provides a visual representation of some of the photos that I've taken on my own over the course of the last couple years. And as they say, a picture says a thousand words, right? This by no means represents every incident that we've had in Cape May Harbor over the course of the last several years, but just a couple video representations here. The good news is that most of these vessels, the owners take care of the issue on their own, and they remove the vessels. What's unfortunate is there are a handful that do not, and they're the ones that we're really here to talk about today. They're recognized as being derelict boats, and oftentimes, they wash up onto our beach in the harbor, and they sit there for a long period of time. If you go to the next slide, this is an aerial photo of the Cape May Harbor, and you'll see there are three stars there. What that represents are the three issues that we currently have today. Go to the next slide. This first one, this occurred approximately three years ago. This is a sunken sailboat, fiberglass sailboat, roughly 30, 32 feet long. We don't have any history on this boat, but what we can tell you is that it did sink off of the Coast Guard base. And if you look at the yellow arrow, it'll give you an indication as to roughly where it is. And it's been there for approximately three years. Next. The next boat has also been here for several years and still exists in the harbor today, exactly as the picture would indicate. And it's located roughly off of the nature center. Remarkably, that boat has survived at least two winters, if not three. And it's just a matter of time before that anchor line deteriorates and it washes up onto our beaches. And so that problem still exists today. And then the final slide here represents another boat that has literally been bouncing around. It's a white-hulled sailboat that was beached off of the nature center last spring. Some of you may have seen it. And it washed over to lower township, and then eventually came to rest along the bulkhead at the Canyon Club. And that's where it remains today. So we have three boats right now. Two of them submerged, which creates another set of circumstances, and one that is still afloat in our harbor. And I think what we're going to propose tonight provides us an opportunity to take action, not necessarily against the ones that are submerged, that's an entirely different issue, but the one that's currently still afloat provides us with an opportunity to take action on that boat to ensure that the inevitable doesn't happen and that it doesn't, perhaps this winter, break anchor and wash up along our shore. Tom?
Okay. You introduced me as a retired Coast Guard, which I am, but I can tell you, nothing I ever did in the Coast Guard has anything to do with being a harbor master. And harbor masters are kind of rare in New Jersey. In fact, I think we might be the first only harbor masters in any port that I can find. But I've been communicating with harbor masters in bigger ports like Newport, Rhode Island, Marblehead, Massachusetts, Newburyport, Massachusetts, where the departments are really well-established and doing a fine job, and also being very, very communicative. They've also said, "You're going to do this as a volunteer? You kidding me?" But I actually don't think Jack and I are going to have a problem with this, because you are not deputizing us to go out board boats, get into arguments with people. We are the eyes and ears and maybe even the brains of putting this together so that we have tools to work with. And that's what this ordinance is all about. It's different than a lot of the other harbors, because we're really trying to address boat owners who plan to come and dock, moor, or anchor in our harbor for more than 30 days. This is not the transient fleet. The transient fleet is well-established since this is one of the few harbors between New York and Virginia, Norfolk, that is a good place to stop or even the long run up the Delaware Bay. So we see incredible number of transient boats coming through. Sometimes weather-related, that they just have to put in for a couple nights. Other times, just to change crews over, take a break, hit carnies, things like that. You know, that is not the problem. What we've really had and what you're seeing here are boats that just have been kind of dumped in the harbor. This ordinance allows us to notify by either a visit to the boat, a message left on the boat, or using the registration number to contact them and present our ordinance that says you have seven days in which to act on securing your boat and moving it. We're trying to make sure that no boats stay moored in our harbor over the winter months. That's really when we've had our problems, the nor'easters coming through. So this is addressing that issue. It still leaves a lot of things open for us to do. And we know as soon as this ordinance is adopted, we really want to get together with the Cape May Police, code enforcement, city manager, to discuss fairly, you know, who's going to take care of what? How do you have to register to let us know your boat's coming in? How you get that permission established to be in our harbor? And I think that'll be a pretty smooth operation. We are also opening up communications with Coast Guard Cape May, Cape May Station. A small part of what you see at the training center is an operating search and rescue, and they have boats out in the harbor almost all the time. The Marine Police, which have their closest facility is in North Wildwood, do patrol, so. And both of them have indicated a real desire to help us and clean up the problem that we're after. So we hope that you will move forward with this, because we're certainly ready to move forward and do the follow-ups, the homework, to get this well-established.
That's great. I think, I don't know if everyone got a chance to read this, but it makes, to me, some just obvious, you know, like you highlighted, this isn't somebody staying for the week or even two weeks. This is when you're getting beyond a month. And we pretty much know exactly what those are. And I think most boaters know, you know, when you're looking at staying in one location for a long time, most of the time, you're getting this exact requirement, you know, they want to know who you are. Are you permitted? Are you insured? Those types of things, which are important for the city. So I think it makes a lot of sense. Any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, it sounds like you have maybe some ideas as far as enforcement. I know that you were saying you have to get together with a few entities. Any ideas on how that would, because this is what we've been looking at for years. Any ideas on how you propose to possibly do that?
Well, New Jersey's laws that give us the enabling legislation to put this ordinance in front of you has fines that are available for us to use, which can be up to $1,250 a day for the first offense. And every day after that is an additional offense. Now, I don't know about you, but if my boat was sitting out there and I had the idea that a government body is going to come after me with that kind of demand for payment, I think I'd get it out of there pretty fast.
I mean, are you looking at signage to possibly, for registration?
Uh huh. First off, I do think, in looking at the other towns that I've been first looking at, I'm kind of picturing myself as a boater that's heading to Newport and wondering. All I did was type in harbor master Newport, Rhode Island, and it came right up in Newport's website with all the guidelines that you needed and other helpful information. So there would be some work to do on the website. And I really think anybody who's moving a boat to a port for 90 days is probably going to at least Google the port, and they could get that information pretty fast. I'm sure the marinas around us are certainly going to want to participate, because a lot of them have had small boats in particular left in their marinas. Breezy Lee has, what, about 30?
30.
Dog boats, they're taking up space, and this will help them too, because they can also insist that you have to get registered. And we'll have a lot of information on these people once they do get registered.
Would they register in a private marina?
No.
Only when they're mooring out or anchoring in the harbor?
Yeah, that's a different situation, because that's private property.
Right, okay.
But it is interesting, as we did go around to the different marinas, we really didn't realize what a big problem it is. These marina owners, they can't take title to those, they can't take possession of those boats to either dismantle them and remove them. They can't sell them. They can't do anything. So they're literally just sitting there. And there's another potential problem, because if they were evicted from the marina, where would they go? They potentially could take, you know, one of the moorings in our harbor, and it goes from being a private to a public issue.
We don't have many docks in Cape May. Most of what you see in our harbor is lower township, and then mostly the other dockage. The only real dock outside of that is the yacht clubs, portable docks. And nobody tries to tie up at the Coast Guard docks. Although they sure anchor. The deepest water in our harbor is actually right off the Coast Guard bases. You take that bend around the harbor. That current that runs through there makes that a very good anchorage. But, you know, when a nor'easter comes up, it comes right down the harbor, and it takes an awful lot of good anchorage or moorage and heavy lines to keep a boat on its anchor or moor.
It's a red flag. Anytime you see a vessel moored in our harbor in the wintertime. Like I said, that light blue hull, it's amazing that it hasn't washed up on our beaches so far, but inevitably, they will over time. So closing the harbor, which is in this ordinance, just makes complete sense. It's just an accident waiting to happen.
I just have two questions. When I first read it, I thought it pertained to boats even in a dock, but it doesn't, correct? I just want to clarify. And I don't know if we have to maybe put maybe a better definition in there that clarifies city waterway versus... Because we're looking at the boats in the harbor, but then there's also lower townships, right? So we had to realize that what's ours and what's theirs.
Right.
And because we don't want to overstep.
The boundary line goes right down the middle of the channel, right? So they could be in lower township one second and Cape May the next. Jack and I have certain, certainly are going to meet with lower township, you know, and show what Cape May is moving forward and suggest that, you know, they do something very similar or the same so that enforcement will be uniform throughout the harbor.
Yeah, I think that's critical.
Essentially.
Just a question I had was, if a boat's given a notice, they may want to talk to somebody. Is there going to be, who are they going to communicate with, I guess, is the question?
The city.
I think it's either going to be code enforcement, city manager, or the police department.
But not us.
Not you guys.
Not us. And that's why one of the first steps will be to meet together. And we're not trying to dump work on them. It's just, as I said, we're not enforcement people.
So we look at code enforcement as being city of Cape May, Coast Guard, and Marine Police. And I think, you know, one way to think about it, anything that is in navigable waters would be Coast Guard. Anything that might be criminally based, you know, would be Marine Police. And anything jurisdictionally, you know, either in lower township or Cape May would come to the city manager.
With the question about the city waterway, getting back to that, because you had mentioned about Harborview having boats there. We're not, and I'm just going to use an example, Cape May Marina. So that would be their, that's not considered Cape May waterway if it's the marina, correct? So even if they have boats that stay there and they don't know who the owner is, that's not our responsibility?
No.
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to clarify.
Right. It's a big issue, and it's interesting to note, but that's not what we're here to talk about today.
I just want to say it's essential that we work with lower township in this process, you know? Our problem, something that was our problem is now their problem. It could be just vice versa in the future with that boat that's in lower township. The registration process, are you saying just go online and register? Is this a free process, a certain program, just like getting a fishing license or something like?
I believe the ordinance requires them to register with the police station.
The police station.
Right.
Which is around the clock, which would be far better than code enforcement.
Right. So if they were to, say, if I wanted to, you know, when I get a fishing license, I screenshot it on my phone. You know, you're supposed to have it in paper, but that way, they always have it if somebody would ask them, "Are you registered?" That way, it's their documented proof. Now, we were talking about the private slips. Is this something that these slips would encourage their membership to get? And is that something that would benefit us? Because you said that they had their own problems as well.
Yeah, I see it as entirely separate.
Okay.
It is entirely separate. I will say, as someone who has a boat in a slip, they'll ask for 10 times more information than what we're asking for. I mean, especially now, they've kind of wised up to people leaving their boats behind, so they like want fingerprints at this point, so.
Sure.
You know, their license, registration, insurance, everything. I mean, and they want updated insurance every six months. I mean, they're very on top of it now.
Now, the violation, say if one of these boats either sank with the registration or without the registration, what, I mean, what kind of recourse can we have? And are the violations enough to get those boats out of the water?
The way it's designed, whatever cost there would be to impound that boat would be incurred by the boat owner.
Okay. Only if they're registered?
Yeah, right.
And getting a boat out of the water after it's sunk is quite a high expense. We are hoping that New Jersey is going to follow through with the steps they've already taken and create a fund that can be available for getting derelict, sunken boats out of harbors. And I really feel if we adopt this and we're keeping an eye on what's happening in our harbor, we're going to reduce the likelihood of sunken boats as close to 100% as we can.
Right.
So, thank you. If we have a boat that's sitting out there and they're not registered, and we can't get them to register, could we take the boat out of harbor based on this ordinance?
Well, we have one right now. There's a light blue boat I mentioned before is not registered. And let's say that we can't get them to register. Then I think the ordinance says that after they've been notified, they have seven days. And after seven days, they can be fined with the option of impounding that boat.
Councilman Meyer, I can just...
Before I answer that question, could we have the opportunity to resell that boat?
If we go through the abandoned title process. So just to piggyback off what Tom and Jack are indicating and everything, they've done a great job of explaining the outline of this. On the enforcement side, we already have, council adopted the abandoned boat ordinance. So we have that in place now, which is a great toolbox for these photos right here. The ones that are floating out there, this registration process would allow the transients to come in and leave and leave no trace. And then it would capture the ones that are just floating out there as well. So you potentially then have two provisions that you can enforce. And the abandoned code provision that we already have and this registration process are both direct products of a state statute. So they would both provide an independent basis for citation, summons, municipal court process with a range of fines, levying costs for removal, and physically removing from a city waterway. Now, the problem, of course, is what Tom outlined is that... Now, the problem, of course, is what Tom outlined is that this is kind of like an unfunded thing right now, and it's a huge problem that a lot of other towns are dealing with. So this will provide a range of tools for the toolbox, and it's kind of up to the city how you want to deploy those. And point of contact, I think, is the biggest thing. You have these two code provisions, so for conscientious boaters, they Google city of Cape May Harbor Master registration, it's going to pop up, probably on the website, it'll at least be in our electronic code book, so people who are conscientious will be able to say, okay, I got to do this, or I stay 29 days, I don't have to do it. And then for the people that just leave their stuff behind, it's going to give the Harbor Masters an opportunity to say, point to a code provision, write down the registration, call code enforcement, and get it, like, get ahead of it before it's three years later and it's just sitting out there in a mooring. So these ones that are out there now will probably be the hardest ones, because you'll get them early with eyes and ears out there now.
So a question I have is, you have been successful in identifying the owner of that boat.
Yes.
Which is, I think this is where we've never begun before. Nobody ever cared.
Right.
The boats were out there, nobody made any attempt to try to find out who owned it. You guys have found that out, and the process, we have a person, I guess, behind the boat now that is liable for everything that we're talking about. You have somebody you can go after, unless they're homeless, but you know.
The Marine Police found out the identification of the person.
Right.
And I'm going to have to do more homework to see, now that we are in a resolution as appointed volunteer Harbor Masters, will that give us the opportunity to go to the Department of Motor Vehicles and say, we have the right to know who owns that boat, how to reach them, and can, you know, without always going through another agency?
That's great.
Yeah, I would, I think originally when we put this together, those are the kinds of things we envisioned, you know, not being direct contact with, but being behind the scenes, working with other agencies to get these kinds of answers.
And to your point, you know, with that light blue hull, right now, we have identified who owns it. We know where they live, we have their contact information, but we don't have the tools to know what to do next.
Right.
And I think what this ordinance will do is give us that roadmap.
Exactly.
Moving forward.
I think we will try to communicate with that pretty fast, maybe through code enforcement, just saying, this is in the works, you better start working on plans to having your boat out of that harbor by November.
And we don't want them just moving into lower township.
And that kind of follows up my other question, because Councilmember Meyer and Deputy Mayor Sheehan mentioned about lower township. Do you, and we originally sent the previous ordinance to them, and we're going to be sending this to them if we adopt it. Do you know if lower township is looking at following suit and putting a Harbor Master in place?
I'm not sure, but we're sending, we would be sending them now to Strong Hens, that's something we would like to see.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Chris, I have a question with this ordinance. Do we have to, in this ordinance, put in any kind of, like, what the fines are?
It's in there.
And I'm just going to go out, you know, for registration, everybody else in town, when they register, they have to pay a minimal fee to cover the paperwork and everything. Are we going to require a fee for registering?
That's up to council. The penalties are a product of the statute, so a lot of this just tracks with the language in the state statute, which is the authority that the council has. So when you get to the penalty provisions, the statute cited, but that's the range that they give, civil penalty of not less than 100, nor more than 1,250.
Right, but who decides that? I mean.
Municipal court judge.
Okay, I didn't know if we had to put in there that the fine would be, you know, like...
We would say the max if you don't move your boat.
Okay.
You know, and then let the municipal court judge determine what's appropriate.
Stacy, most of the other communities do have a registration fee of like $50. That $50 collecting and everything could be more of a hassle than the $50 would be worth. And I think just to get this program off to a smooth start, you know, a free registration would make, it's plain and simple, they're not even charging me. Why wouldn't I go ahead and do it?
Exactly.
Right. But we do have to have that form, you know, developed on what we want to get from them.
And I think putting it on the website is essential, really. I mean, I think we've got to make this as easy as possible, even an electronic submission of the, you know.
So, and then we, I spoke with the Harbor Masters, we formulated the criteria for that form, and that's really in B, 1 through 5. That's the essential information that they should provide.
Right, but we've got to get it into like a PDF or something that...
Right, right. And it'll be those items with a line next to it, please fill in the blank or attach that document, registration and insurance, those types of things.
I just want to say that, you know, you have my support with this ordinance. I just want to ask city council if you look at F real quick, if you don't mind, because my concern is the cost of the logistics to take the vessel out of the water and ship it across the town to Candy House Lane. And I was wondering if we could look at F. It says, seven days following the date of the notice is affixed, and the vessel does not comply. What if we were to say you could get a fine at that seven days and give them another seven days before you have to put all that money out to get that out of the water? And whatever the logistics to get it through town? Just a thought, I don't know, I'm just trying to work on this, because I don't want to spend the money.
That's where I think the toolbox concept comes into play, because you could potentially put a notice out there and have a continuing violation, like every day your boat's out here, it's a new violation. And you know, our city code generally provides for that type of penalty. The problem becomes, at what point are you finding a ghost into oblivion? Like, because that person just disappeared off the map, and then the city, I think, always wants to have the option to say, look, this is a problem, we're never going to find this person, and we can take this out if we need to. But as the three of us discussed when we met, we always viewed that, I think, as a last resort hammer, because of the cost and logistics of doing that, but always looking first at, let's go down the contact route first, find the registration, find the address, let's get the emails if you're here longer than 30 days, cell phone number, like, make it easy for us to find you and make it difficult for you to run away if you leave your boat here, is the initial concept. And then that removal, have it out there, but have it always be a last resort, unless the state wants to rain down money for that type of program, because it is something that they've provided the statute, but then left the cost of it to the towns, which, you know, there's policy concerns with that, obviously, so.
Used fiberglass boats have very, very little resale value, particularly when they get as old as some of the things you're looking here. So, you know, putting the, or just, if I don't want the boat anymore, selling is really not an object.
Yeah.
A legitimate thing for them to do. So how do I get rid of it other than that? Well, I could anchor it in a harbor somewhere, and it's somebody else's problem. And this is happening all over the eastern seaboard, and probably the western seaboard is a major, major problem.
Yeah, North Jersey's got a far more complicated issue than we did, and they still have the remnants of the hurricane, and they're struggling with that.
Yeah.
Councilmember Meyer, if I can just add to your comment about, you know, can we build in a step that's less than going all the way and removing a boat and that kind of cost? And that's the reason for saying the word "may," the city may, that boat may be removed to a holding area.
Right.
That's kind of up to the city to determine at that point if that's the step you want to go to, but we could also go the notice and continuing violation route too. So there's a range of options that are open for execution on the city manager and code enforcement side, and it's definitely implied in there that that's the way it can go.
We have the bully pulpit, you know, that's, knowing the things that we can do, I think, are going to get cooperation, one way or another.
I think you're off to a really great start, which is not that surprising, but we appreciate it, so thank you, and I think you have some great suggestions. I'd just suggest to council, if you read this over the next week and have any other suggestions, maybe for them, the solicitor and Tom and Jack can go over those comments, and then look to have this on the next meeting if that works for everybody. Good?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it's great.
So the next meeting would be the introduction then, Zach?
Well, let me ask that. Time-wise, because obviously going into the winter, if we were to have this on introduction for the next meeting, where would that be putting us for actual?
Aaron.
Aaron, where would that put us for?
It's usually around a month and a half, but let me bring up a couple real quick. So if we introduce it on the 4th, probably wouldn't be on for second reading until November 1st, and then we're looking at, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, maybe effective by the end of November?
Does any, I mean, I think the point here is you don't want to get too far into the winter for some of these issues. Does anyone have an issue with putting this on for first reading now?
My only thing is I want to clarify the definition of the waterway, and I think the one, where is it? Could be used, where is my?
City.
City waterway.
City waterway.
Right, but we say...
Could I make a suggestion on that? I think I...
You say city waterway, then you say jurisdiction. I just want to make sure that we keep the same words, that's all.
Right, and we could put something in the first part of it, because the scope, you know, section A, is every owner or operator of a vessel that moors or docks in a city waterway or grounds on land under the control of the city for a period of longer than 30 days. And I think your point is, well, we don't want to cast too wide a net to get the private marinas, so we can say for the avoidance of doubt, this does not include private marinas.
Right.
And that can, I can just add that sentence at the end.
Is everyone okay with that addition?
And council, just to clarify, I'm sorry.
I don't want people to start thinking, oh my gosh, I'm like...
I'm docked in a marina, I have to go register.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So can we just make that amendment and?
We're going to have to amend it.
Let's do this, make this a first reading.
Sure.
To clarify that, though, I mean, it says no registration will be issued or authorized between November 1st and March 31st, so by the time this takes effect, we're not going to be registering boats anyway, regardless. But it's not registering, it's getting rid of the ones that are in the harbor currently.
Right.
Yeah, that's what...
By not registering, you're saying you can't moor there without registration, because it's not open in the winter months.
In other words, if somebody, if we pass this and somebody's sitting out there, we can, they would be in violation of this, because they can't be there without registration, and we wouldn't issue one for the winter.
Right.
But, but to be clear, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, just to finish that thought, this does not cover somebody going from New York to St. Thomas, and they need to stop in for two days and anchor.
Right.
Those people can do that in December, they can, if they want, if they're crazy enough to go down in the winter, but this only covers people that are staying here over 30 days. So I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
No, no, I was just saying, then, do you think sometime in B, we have to make that clear, that, or do you think it's all right?
I think that that is clear in scope.
Okay.
In A, because it's for a period longer than 30 days. So anything less than 30 days, this doesn't even apply to.
Right.
And just for clarification, the last sentence would be, for the avoidance of doubt, this provision does not apply to private docks or marinas because people have houses and docks.
And we never have anybody staying here for longer than 30 days during that time period?
We won't now.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, yeah.
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, if they went, if they went to a marina, they could, right? They could go spend, say, 15 days in the harbor, go two days in the marina, and then come back out and do another 29 days or whatever.
And if somebody did do that, it's unlikely, but it is possible that somebody say they have engine failure and they stop and they're here, but technically the harbor's closed during that time period, so they can't be...
For extended periods of time.
Right.
So that's why in B, there's a date, I mean, why can't we just make this year round? Say they just have, that would, I'm just saying, say, you know, and then a winter, no one's really watching, you know, the shores, and I want to get rid of a boat real quick and dump it in Cape May, you know, during November, you know, 15th or whatever it is. I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't understand why we can't give the opportunity to register after November 1st.
Because we don't want them there longer than 30 days.
We don't, we don't want them.
In the winter months.
We don't want them there.
We know we don't want them there, but we want their information, don't we?
Only if they're staying longer than 30 days.
If they're not there, we don't need their information.
I see what you're saying, though, Councilmember Meyer. It's almost like, do we want to get people's information if they're staying there less than 30 days at a certain point? Is that...
That's not necessarily, yeah, I'm just saying, the reason of the registration is that we have recourse against these people. So if we're not requiring registration during the time we're not supposed to have them there, then we don't have that much recourse. Does that make sense?
No, we should have recourse because they're not supposed to be there.
Yeah, so we can take action right away.
And the recourse is really time and having these code provisions in place, because if it's, if it appears to be abandoned, even floating ones can be abandoned if they're posing a navigational hazard, and that can be up to discretion. But then you're getting them in time. You're saying, you know, it either appears to be abandoned, so we might set you under that, or it's been over 30 days and this thing's still sitting out there and you haven't come in and seen us. So we're getting your registration, we're going to fire off a letter, and we're getting you a month later rather than three years later, because we have, now have a provision to point to.
Could we be specific about that in part B? That the harbor is closed from November 1st to?
That's where it says that no registration will be issued.
I know, because it's closed.
But it's not.
It's not closed.
Well, you're right.
Close for 30 days. They want to be there over 90 days.
More than 90 days, all right.
There is a clause in there.
I'm just wrapping my head around this.
If you come in for emergency reasons, you know, this is not ruling you out.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
I think they got it.
Yeah.
All right, do I have, and I don't think we need to amend this, we all agree that that sentence is added.
That additional language that we, about private docks and marinas, I'll just, this is a minor point, but our, it should say Article 4 and Section 166-16, because Article 3 and 166-15 is the Harbor Master provision. So this will be one after that now.
And city clerk, do we have an ordinance number for this?
Yes, I believe it's going to be 481.
I just have one additional question, thinking about that March 31st. Is that too late? I mean...
Too late?
Yeah, I mean, I think the beginning of March, maybe, I don't know. People get their boats out in the water, I...
Definitely, but I think, I don't think they're going to be looking to move a boat that's put out there, say, March 1st, that's so clearly somebody's operating, using...
It's 30 days.
So you're looking at the end of March anyway.
Yeah.
So...
And the weather, the nor'easters are still coming in March.
March is a bad month.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not a big boater. The weather turns pretty, you know, pretty nice.
It's awful out there.
But also, I think this does leave some things to interpretation. I think if somebody's willing to register their vote, their boat, and to look at, it's going to be, I think, pretty obvious when a boat's actually abandoned. This just helps us get there in a quicker timeframe.
Yeah, there's another boat out right now in front of the nature center that I didn't even bring to your attention, because it's in great condition. I've seen it used, and it's not an issue, but you're right, you can tell, and just look at those photos. You can tell the ones that we need to be concerned about.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Go ahead, please, go ahead.
I'm sorry to blabber this. So would this be finalized as ordinance by November 1st?
On this timeline, if you guys introduce this evening, it's going to be on for second reading on October 18th and effective November 15th.
November 15th. So we said that the harbor's closed after November 1st, is that right? Or you, you know, we don't expect anybody to be there?
For a period longer than 30 days.
So after November 1st, we could start going after this one boat, this one boat, that we've been talking about all night? Okay.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, like, I know we're talking about a time period, but the harbor won't be closed necessarily, but just people won't be issued registrations for longer than 30 days, just so that's, that's clear.
Okay.
All right, so do I have a motion on ordinance number 481?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Counselmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Counselmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes. Jack and Tom, thank you very much, good work.
Thank you.
Keep it up. Thank you.
I have to say, Chris gave us tons of help putting this together.
Yes, he did.
Thank you.
I've never used warehouse 70.
See, Jack.
Thank you.
And next, counsel, we have a few ordinances for introduction. We have 479-2022, an ordinance amending Chapter 434 of the Code of the City of Cape May regarding designation of containers for recycling.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on this?
I do. I have a, a safety concern. We're going from 32 gallons to 96 gallons. And just everybody's aware, the number one workman's comp injury is trash collection. And we're in, we're adding on, we're doubling the weight here. And most trash collection, they have a machine that does it, our guys do it manually. So I think we've got to take a look at really, do we want to double the weight to 100 pounds?
But Deputy Mayor, we do have the, the equipment in the back of the trucks. Our guys don't have to lift it. It's, if lift it, it's lifted and dumped in our trucks.
But do we have to have a certain type of trash can then for that machine to operate? Because right now, you can put anything out with your recycling, just has to have a sticker on it.
Right.
So for me, for that machine to work properly, you have to have a certain container for it to lift it up.
You're right, you're correct. And, and they have those containers. But our guys will not, that was our concern, excuse me, they're, they're not going to pick it and get hurt. This is to prevent injuries. So we have the, the thing in the back of the truck that grabs it, dumps it, puts it back down.
So can we, well, if you're saying it's a 96 gallon, does it have to be a certain make for it to work with this machine?
I don't know what exact make it is.
You know what I'm saying, like, because I don't want to get a, somebody get a container and then the container doesn't fit the machine to lift it.
Yeah.
I think, our superintendent of Public Works had reached out to me on this, and the, the problem is the current code says the fill container shall not exceed 32. Well, there's 96 gallon containers all over my street at least, my container's above this, so I'm violating this right now. And, well, it's just, it's just the way it is. I mean, you go throughout town, everybody has a bigger container, and I think their, his point was that a lot of those containers do work with their machine, at least that's what Mr. Przynski had indicated. So he, he saw it as a practical amendment to kind of have DPW and that code catch up with what they're collecting on a weekly basis.
I think that Deputy Mayor's point is not everybody has that style trash can. And if they see that trash can and they say, well, you know, why didn't the Public Works take my trashes or my recycling this week? And I'll just consider the weight.
It's up, it's up too.
Counselmember Meyer? Sorry, thank you.
I just, I just think what the Deputy Mayor's trying to say is a lot of recycling cans out there are not equipped or not compatible with the pickup service that the truck provides.
But you can still use, if I'm not mistaken, you can still use your current container that you're using now, just up to.
And I, my thing is, I think, I think the Deputy Mayor has a point that it should be.
Standardized?
Standardized, if, if we're going to have a standardized weight.
Or at least if you're going to go up to 100, 100 pounds, you have to have a certain container. I mean, I only put out my little black one that he can, it's probably less than 30 pounds, right? So that doesn't have, I don't want to have to go out and buy a big container for them to use my, my couple of cans. But if you're going to be going up to 100 pounds, then you should have this container that's compatible.
We have a, a universal tipper on the back, so it'll fit all of the cans.
All the cans?
Yeah.
Okay, that's something we didn't know.
That's fine.
Did this come from Public Works as the request?
Yes.
Okay. So Public Works is requesting this? I mean, that's initially, this is, that's the genesis of the, of this change. And they, and the folks would still be able to use whatever containers that.
Oh, yeah, they, if it's just regular can, they're just going to dump it by hand.
I think what it is, is the 96 gallon containers all do have that bar that, that they lift, if it's a 96 gallon.
Correct, when they pull up and they see that, they look at it and dump it.
It would be nice to have that confirmed by the superintendent before this was for second reading.
To, to make sure that the, the higher weight ones are equipped with the bar so that it's, it's mechanical and not, to address your concern.
If you want somebody going out buying a trash can, they're like, well, this one doesn't work, you got to.
Well, they, they virtually have to because nobody's moving a 96 gallon can around. This has wheels on it, which means it has to have the handle to wheel the thing. They, I don't think they make such a thing anymore.
Right.
Because I know when we, we did this before, people had cans that were too big and they, they couldn't do them. And that's why I just want to make sure that we don't go down that.
All the ones at Home Depot have that, are on wheels and have the.
They have a bar.
If you search online for 96 gallon trash can, they all look the same.
Okay.
I'm just throwing it out there. Yeah, they, it's all the same style, anything that comes up. So I, I think you'd probably have to get that.
I'm fine introducing this, but I think there are a couple of good questions that are coming up in regards for second reading. I'd, I'd like to know exactly the type of can that there, that is necessary so we can at least make the, if there's any adjustments that the public need to make, they, they know what it is.
Right.
We'll have the superintendent. I'm sorry, Mayor, we'll have the superintendent here for the second reading.
Okay.
To explain.
That'd be great.
Yeah, because I also want him here because, because workman's comp, it's, you know, trash collection is the biggest workman's comp injury or claims that are out there, that the workers are required to use the machine for these containers.
And you'll hear from him, it's, this is just a preventive measure also of injuries. We don't want to see our guys getting hurt lifting heavy stuff.
And sometimes these, you know, well, it's faster and easier if I just pick it up and throw it in versus using the machine, and that was my.
It may be guided by the same concern that you have, just, there's a number in here, but I, I think his concern was probably along the same lines as what you're indicating now.
So counsel, my suggestion would be, let's introduce this, but in the meantime, if you have any questions, let's get those questions to the city manager to, to, to get to the superintendent and, and get anything answered. And if you're not comfortable with the answers to those questions, we'll talk about that at the second reading. Okay?
Sounds good.
Alright, do I have a motion on ordinance 479?
It's already moved.
Do we have a movement? Okay, I'm sorry.
Motion and a second, counsel.
We have a motion and a second, okay. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Counselmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Counselmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Counselmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Next, we have 480-2022, an ordinance of the City of Cape May amending the revised general ordinances of the city to provide for restricted handicap parking spaces at or adjacent to 230 Windsor Avenue for Rocco Senator and 214 North Street for George Kumaras.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Counselmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Counselmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Counselmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Next, counsel, we have an ordinance for second reading and consideration for adoption. This is ordinance 475-2022, an ordinance amending Section 437 of the Cape May City Code to update local requirements for stormwater management to reflect amendments to the NJDEP's Stormwater Management Rules under NJAC 7:8. And there is a public hearing this evening, Mayor.
Do I have anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 475? Seeing none, do I have a, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion on 475?
I'll make a motion.
Mayor, if, if I can.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, go ahead, please.
I'm, I'm sorry, and we're dealing with the stormwater ordinance right now. We did get comments back from the planning board, just wanted to address that with counsel before we went to a vote. And there, there's two things. One, that I think can be addressed right now at council table, then there's a second part that might require further discussion and consideration, not part of this process. The first is just, the recommendation from the planning board was to amend the definition of major development to reflect the current definition that's in our code right now. Major development under the state model would be one acre. Our, our current provision, which provides more of a local balance, would be any development that provides for ultimately disturbing more than 5,000 square feet of land or 5,000 square feet of impervious coverage. So that probably is more in line with the City of Cape May and, and development standards here. And I, I concur with that comment, and I just wanted to present, that was one of the, overall, this is consistent with the master plan, which is what the planning board is reviewing for, but that was their comment that they wanted to present to counsel.
And I, obviously, I was at the planning board meeting, it makes all the sense in the world, we're already at 5,000 square feet, we're, I don't think the idea of this was to make it a, a bigger. Yeah, so up to an acre, you know, and I think sticking with what we've had on the books for years makes a lot of sense, so.
So.
Make a motion.
Yeah, counsel could make a motion to incorporate the previous, the existing definition into this model and then, you know, do a motion to amend. This would be a, a substantial change, so we would have to republish and do another second reading on this, but it would be with that definition, or the existing definition, excuse me. I just wanted to, before you get to that, the second thing that I previewed was, one of the other comments, I think, was stormwater management on something that may be less than major development. You know, smaller developments in town that may not meet the standard. I'll just give you an example in practice. I'm the zoning board solicitor in Seattle City. Seattle City has a stormwater management code for minor development. Minor development is if you're doing, in addition to a building with 250 square feet or greater, if you're building a pool, or if you're just blank slate building a new building, there's certain requirements to incorporate stormwater management to help take some of the load off of, you know, the public sewer system and that kind of thing. So that's some, also, I think, a suggestion that the planning board floated out there, and I just wanted to bring that up because it is in the report that, or at least in their notice that they sent through, and it's in counsel's packet. But that's the context, you don't have to do that now, but that's kind of just an example of what they, I think they were proposing.
Would that be a separate ordinance then for minor development? So it really doesn't affect this ordinance?
I wouldn't recommend going through that process right now at the table. You can, this is a state requirement, so we just want to make sure that's tailored to our, our local concerns, but we can revisit the minor part later.
Can I address that then for a second before we go back to this? Would counsel be interested, this was a recommendation from the planning board, and I think it made sense to me, but would counsel want to see a minor development stormwater management ordinance from the solicitor for consideration or no?
I think it would be excellent, because I think that's what we're.
Okay.
I think when we have a discussion at the planning board, there's a lot of, I think everybody at the planning board has dealt with stormwater and the problems that we have. So I think this is something that for, would take care of a lot of the issues when we have small additions put on, pools and everything, that, that water isn't being pushed to the neighbor or, and it's being addressed.
The planning board engineer was really looking for some guidance from counsel, too.
Well, could we charge them to give us the guidance?
That's what I was thinking, too. Craig, having Craig give us the guidance.
I, I would be happy to reach out to Mr. Hurlis just to.
Okay.
To bring up the concept that I, that I see in practice, and he probably has some other examples, and then maybe we can talk about formulating something with both of our input to present to counsel.
I think they could probably give us a better idea what size that they're looking for, for a minor development.
Definitely.
Instead of us discussing up here.
I think that's perfect.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Perfect. Okay, so, so that's the direction on, on minor development. Back to this ordinance.
Before we get into any amendments, discussions, what is the context of the fire pits? Is that also for lot coverage? And it's in this memo that we received from the planning board?
I think that was an omnibus sort of list of discussion items, not related to this.
Alright, just making sure because you were talking about the other thing that Seattle City, you know, if you have a big fire pit, you know, you're going to need some drainage.
Thankfully, another separate issue.
I'd like to make a men, should I make the amendment now to the definition that we incorporate the, the current definition into this new ordinance? Do you want me to read it a whole thing or, I mean, I have it, he has it written here.
I have it right here, if, if you want me to go through it, Deputy Mayor. It's, the, so, new definition in this ordinance, but it's the old one from the existing code. And it says that any develop, this will apply to any development that provides for ultimately disturbing more than 5,000 square feet of land or 5,000 square feet of impervious coverage. This rule also applies to redevelopment and infill projects. At the discretion of the Cape May City Planning Board or Zoning Board of Adjustment, whichever is applicable, and on a case-by-case basis, stormwater management for major development projects can be waived to meet the minimum stormwater control requirements, requirements as defined in the stormwater rule NJAC 7-8, due to site-specific hardships and that it can be demonstrated that such a waiver would still provide for the protection of local water quality. Projects that qualify from this requirement are as follows. Development that provides for ultimately disturbing land from 5,000 square feet to one acre, and development that provides for ultimately increasing impervious coverage from 5,000 square feet to one and a quarter acre. Otherwise, compensatory stormwater mitigation measures for noncompliant projects will, will require in accordance with NJAC 7-8. Disturbance for purposes of this rule is the placement of impervious surface or exposure and/or movement of soil or bedrock or clearing, cutting, or removing vegetation.
Is that, is that what you were going to say, Deputy Mayor?
Exactly.
Okay, okay.
Word for word.
Okay. I have, I have a motion, do I have a second on the amendment?
I'll second.
Second, any, any questions or comment on the, on the, on the amendment? Okay, roll call.
Counselmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Counselmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Counselmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes. Do I have a motion on the amended ordinance?
To reintroduce as amended, counsel.
Yeah, please, yes, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Alright, roll call.
Counselmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Counselmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Counselmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have the public portion on the resolutions only, Mayor, if we'd like to open it to the public at this time.
Did we open up for public hearing on, on the?
We, we did for 475.
Yeah. Yeah.
We did. There was none, but we're going to have another public hearing in a month anyway.
Thank you.
No problem.
So do we have any public comment on the resolutions only this evening? Seeing none, we can close public comment on resolutions?
Council, anything you'd like to remove from the consent agenda tonight?
Any removals, council?
I would like two thirty-five and two forty, please.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
All set. All right. On the consent agenda this evening, we have the fire incident report for the month of August twenty twenty-two, the police incident report for the month of August twenty twenty-two, occupancy tax report through the month of August twenty twenty-two, overtime reports from January through August twenty twenty-two. Resolution two thirty-six oh nine twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing a temporary use agreement for a portion of the Bank Street parking lot for staging and storage during construction of the Cape May substation. Two thirty-seven oh nine twenty twenty-two, resolution appointing a member to the Cape May City Municipal Taxation and Revenue Advisory Committee. Two thirty-eight oh nine twenty twenty-two, resolution for the appointment of the Atlantic County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund official, this is the Temporary Alternate Fund Commissioner. Two thirty-nine oh nine twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing professional services contract for animal control services for the remainder of twenty twenty-two. And two forty-one oh nine twenty twenty-two, resolution for the payment of bills.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Council, going back to two thirty-five oh nine twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing a shared services agreement with the Cape May County Municipal Utilities Authority for solid waste disposal and recycling services.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
I have, I have some questions. It's about the last three pages of this, of this resolution. It talks about the disposition of different types of materials, such as recycling and other types of waste. And it says, some of these things are free of charge to be, you know, sent to the landfill or to the transfer station. Is this specifically for the municipality, or is this for the residents of the municipality too? Because I think if, for the residents, I think this should be an attempt by the city to make sure that these opportunities are available or known to the public. And if you have, last three pages.
Are you talking about exhibit?
On exhibit.
Exhibit A, exhibit B, exhibit C. Or A and B.
A, B, and B.
A, B, and B, yeah.
Okay.
Let's take a look at that real quick. It says, free of charge, you know, for participating members, free of charge. Sometimes the language changes.
I see there's a tipping fee for the one, for singles, for the single stream.
Well, this is an example. On the last, the bottom of exhibit B, household hazardous waste collection days. The authority will continue to provide this service by scheduled two days of collection. I'm sorry, that's probably not the one I'm looking for. Or, let's say wood pallets, delivered to the multi-classic cycling center at Sanitarium landfill complex or transfer station at no charge. Is that no charge to the municipality to dump that, or no charge to anybody who lives in that municipality to do that? Because I think if somebody wants to get rid of their refrigerator anytime they want, they should know where to take it and how much it's going to cost them. And if we're, if we're a member of this, this program, it shouldn't cost them anything. That would be, that would be something called a white goods container. Or computer equipment, leaves, grass clippings.
See, I always thought I paid for it when I went to the county station. That's why, yeah, I'm a little confused.
Yeah, but I never would do that. I thought it was on the website that you take this stuff over to the.
But you got to pay the way.
To the county.
No, I'm talking about locally here. I don't take, I can bring a washing machine over to the, to the dump, over on Cannon House. I bring all my, I bring everything over.
Yeah, I believe that that's what it's referring to, if you, if the taxpayers take their goods, these goods listed, over to our transfer station, they will then not charge us if we're participating in this when we take it over.
It's a pass-through.
Right.
Okay.
But if you show up at the dump, they're probably going to charge you.
Yeah, the county, yeah.
Charge me every time.
Okay.
But they do have a couple of days a year where you can take, like, you know, like paints, things like that.
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's certain things that they do have, yeah.
That answers my question.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this one? Do I have a motion?
We have a motion.
We already have a motion, sorry.
No worries.
Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
And two forty oh nine twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing change order to, to the contract for the Welcome Center parking and lighting improvements. This is contract M six in the city of Cape May.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have some comments. The last page of this proposal from Charles Marandino, we have the, the three parts of the, what do you call this?
Addition.
Change order. The first one is the pantapoles, sixty-eight hundred dollars. The second one is topsoil and sod for twenty-eight hundred dollars. And the last part is irrigation for twenty-five grand. And this is for the Welcome Center parking lot. You know, the total of these, of the change order is, what is it, thirty? Thirty-four, six hundred? Is that right?
So.
And it says it's forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
But, but when you add them up, twenty-five, two, and, one, two, and three, don't want to come up to thirty-five thousand.
Well, those items are not, the recommendation from the city engineer is to not go forward with alternates one, two, and three. So it ends up being the proposal total at, like, the middle number, which is two nine nine, nine fifty, and fifty cents. That's what's, just informationally, that's what the city manager recommends council do based on his review of the project. So those items that you noted, Councilman Meyer, is, he's, the city manager was giving a thumbs, or city engineer was giving a thumbs down to those items.
Well, I guess I'm confused then, when it comes to lighting and electrical, it's a hundred and eighteen thousand. On the last proposal, it was about a hundred and forty thousand. So is there a reason why that's going down, but the price is going up? And didn't we already pay for those lighting? I thought we had the lights already for this project.
We do, we have the equipment. This covers the labor as well as some of the other electrical work that has to be done.
So that's why it's less, then?
Correct, because we already have some of the supplies, some of the materials.
Okay, so like the hundred and forty thousand that it comes up originally, it's only thirty thousand for those lights, and we're paying a hundred and eighteen for the, it's the twenty-seven to twenty-eight on the previous one. See, lighting improvements, electrical improvements, forty thousand, and lighting electrical here is a hundred and eighteen thousand. I guess my thing is, something must have changed if it went up fifty thousand. So what are we getting for additional fifty thousand?
It's a different, it's a different project. I mean, that's why I.
So, so we're not rebidding, so shouldn't we rebid it then if it's a different project? If we're going through, all these prices are changing, then how can we give them, why aren't we rebidding it?
Because it's, it's the same project, it's a different plan, it's an altered plan that was the product of a settlement agreement that was reached after this blew up in two thousand sixteen. So, you know, there's a little of, the bid went out in two thousand sixteen, we thought we had a deal, I think the city thought they had a deal, and then it turns out we didn't have a deal, and then we ended up in court. And the thought process was thinking that in two thousand sixteen, we had a good low bidder at that time, and we made some modifications of the plan to settle the litigation and get a parking lot out of it. And that required some flexibility on the part of the contractor in speaking with the city engineer to see, is this feasible? Or should we just put this out to bid? And some things had to be tweaked on it, is my understanding. And that's how they landed on, we can do this by change order, this is permitted under local contracts law, to do this by way of change order. It's not a completely new project, but it is an altered plan. So that's how we ended up here, I think, is the outline of that. The nuts and bolts of where the lighting is and that kind of thing, I don't, I don't have that information, unfortunately.
I guess, so the change order, if I'm understanding it correctly, then, is this whole, is the whole nuts and bolts? This whole thing is the change.
It looks like it might be an increase in cost, if I'm not mistaken. Because if I'm looking at this, you, you have the total amount in costs that have actually increased. I mean, supply chain issues, things like that, am I correct?
Yes, and just general inflation from two thousand sixteen.
Since, since two thousand sixteen, yeah.
Wages have changed, you know, lots of expenses.
Right, but at the same time, we already bought the lights.
We have them, yes.
So that's not including it in this price. The first price, it was including the lights. So at two hundred and forty.
That was the original cost.
The original price, they say, I'm just going to round up, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's the original.
That included the lights.
Correct.
Now, it's three hundred thousand, but it doesn't include the lights because we already bought them.
Correct.
Correct. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I don't mean to belabor this, I appreciate you guys helping us out with this. So when it goes to the letter I have from EDA, it says in the second paragraph that the revised bid quote, as exhibit two, two nine, three hundred thousand, which is nineteen point nine percent more than the original contract amount, this amount excludes the following items, including the schedule of quantities provided, and that was the landscaping, topsoil, and irrigation, I said. So those were taken out of the original scope, or they were going to be added to this, because I think it's, I think it's great that you're not including this as part of this. And I ask that because, right after it says those three items, it says, the revised proposal includes three alternatives, alternative additions.
They're actually alternate one, two, and three.
So the second paragraph says, these items are taken out, and then the sentence after those items says, they're going to be put back into it. Does anybody, ambiguity there?
But then it says that it's.
But then, you got to, as you keep reading, it is recommended that Charles, that the Charles Marandino LLC change order base bid amount of two ninety-nine, nine fifty, fifty cents be granted without the three alternate additions.
Vince is just going through, you know, the contractor gave us three alternates, and
he's, and he's recommending that we not take the alternates.
Okay. I think that was a great move on his part.
Yeah, definitely.
So my question is, at nineteen point nine percent, almost twenty percent, are change orders allowed to be that high of a percentage of the original bid?
Yes.
Without being, have to be rebid?
Yes.
Okay.
At nineteen point nine percent.
What does it have to be, not over twenty?
Twenty.
Oh, so it's not over twenty, okay. So if we had included these other things, it would have been over twenty, and we would have to rebid.
If you want, I mean, and you can, council can do that if you want, anyway. But it, this was, I think the thought process was, we thought we had a good bid in two thousand sixteen, some unforeseeable events took place and stretched this thing out long enough. If you think that doing, knowing the cost increase, is this a reasonable way to get this done, knowing that this contractor is indicating they're ready to go?
It's very possible that we could, we could rebid this and get a higher bid.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent. I, I just want to give a little more general context to this, because first off, this project has been attempted to be done since like two thousand fourteen, okay? This is the biggest parking lot project in the city of Cape May in decades. And this is the DOT, the people are from Chicago and all across the country on a Zoom meeting. They don't even understand that the city of Cape May is an island, they're thinking the train is still coming into town, wait a second, you're not a train station, but you are a train station, the tracks are there, but they're not operating. Believe me, this was just an absolute mess. And the first victory was getting the legal issues done, which took years. Then I think the second victory, honestly, is this, this resolution, in that the fact that we are taking the low bid from two thousand sixteen and still working within that bid now in two thousand twenty-two. So it, the other thing is, this starts this project and gets it going before the DOT throws another wrench and gets us off track, is what I'm trying to say for our train station.
I guess I'm just clarifying, we are taking out items, which I guess are whatever, we're taking out items, but it's increasing fifty percent, so it's almost, not fifty percent, fifty thousand. So we're almost looking at the fact that it's increasing almost a hundred thousand, right?
No, it's, 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 I put the increase in the resolution.
Irrigation in here.
It's going up fifty, about fifty thousand, it's forty-nine.
Well, fifty thousand, but, but that's excluding, we're taking items out of that bid, though. It's gone up fifty thousand, but we're removing the landscaping, topsoil, and irrigation.
Okay.
That's what we're removing. So not only is it going up fifty, fifty thousand, but we're removing three items from it also.
Yes, things have changed since two thousand sixteen, there's no doubt about it. But I think it's, it's a real accomplishment to get this parking lot going and doing it again under the two thousand sixteen contract. Yes, it had to be reworked. But I think frankly, if we put this out to bid again, we're going to be talking about a lot more of an expense. And we're seeing that across the board with any, any public bidding. Look at Stone Harbor just had to stop their transmission pumps and things like that because it came in at like ten times the cost. I mean, it's really, things have just changed.
I agree, I think it's the best-case scenario, and I think our engineer and our managers did a good job keeping costs down with this particular case.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we have a motion in a second, roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Any old business, council?
Council, any old business? Okay. Any new business, city solicitor?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
City manager?
Nothing, Mayor.
City clerk?
Just a few. We, I do want to announce that we have an upcoming free rabies clinic sponsored by the city of Cape May. It's going to be on Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, from four thirty to five thirty PM, down in the basement or lower level of City Hall, out front of the construction zoning office. So dogs and cat owners are welcome. You can give a call to the clerk's office if you have questions about that, we do have flyers up here, and we've made that aware, made this available to the towers and the housing authority especially, so spread the word, please. We also, I believe, Manager Vol mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that there is a community cleanup day scheduled for Saturday, October first, two thousand twenty-two, sponsored by the city, from eight thirty AM to twelve thirty PM. We will be meeting at the Fisherman's Memorial, then I believe, working our way up towards the Nature Center area along the harbor. It's going to be a trash pickup, and there will be tools and lunch provided, and we would love for volunteers to come. And that's it, Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Baldwin?
I think Manager Vol covered a lot of what I was going to mention in the, in the intro, so thank you. No.
Pardon me, Councilman Meyer?
I'd just like to reflect on the presentations that we had today, they were excellent, we have some great volunteers in this town, great history in this town, and I just think it just shows how good we work with the community. I'd like to also just talk specifically about the commercial from the police station department. Whoever did that editing and filming, we need to make sure we know who they are, because they did a great job for any future projects. And I felt like I was watching a commercial for like CNPD Blue or something, I wanted to watch that show, their advertising, so I just thought it was incredible.
I think it was Jason, Jason Casella.
Mm-hmm. It was, yeah. Deputy Mayor?
The only thing I want to bring up is to make sure that we're keeping the workers for the firehouse out of our parking lot, so that the city employees have a place to park, and anybody coming into City Hall have a place to park.
We have a meeting tomorrow, I'm sure we can remind our contractors. Councilman Yeager?
Nothing to do, thank you, Mayor.
I just kind of reiterate a couple of the things, again, the crosswalks will start again, and I think you said tomorrow, city manager, tomorrow or Thursday, repainting of the crosswalks, which, by the way, they started that down at the Cove and have been working their way through, kind of like, basically in the middle of town right now, around Madison Avenue, and, and they really look nice, they do a nice job. The Welcome Center park, parking lot, I appreciate that that went through, and, and I think after years, Shane, I think you're most familiar with this project, it'll be nice to finally